Mr. Ryan, John Thomas.
We salute the flag of the United States of America, the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please start in more silence. Very much. Would you say it? Do you have your cell phones if you have them? First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Raddick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. Items two through six constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of the minutes of the March twenty eighth meeting. Item three is approval of claims. Item four from the deputy commissioner of elections is includes A, receive the appointment of June M. Hall as Little Sioux Township clerk, and B, receive the appointment of Paul Fram as the Little Sioux Township trustee. Item five from the county auditor is approval of a liquor license application for a scarecrow farm lot in Lawton. Item six from human resources is approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Nelson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. Item seven from Hungry Canyons Alliance, John Thomas, is discussion of the Hungry Canyons Alliance program for information. Welcome.
Do you have to turn this on? No, it's on. Okay. All right. Hi, I've been here last in twenty nineteen, so some of, I recognize some of you. Matthew's been on a tour before. So my executive committee, which is made up of county engineers, county supervisors, because there's been so much turnover, has asked that I visit all nineteen counties, which are part of Hungry Canyons, just tell them what we do, kind of educate them. I'm not requesting any money today. I've already requested the five thousand dollars that all counties give us for annual dues. So Hungry Canyons is a unique organization. There's nothing like it anywhere else in the country that I'm aware of, or the world for that matter, because we have a nexus of a lot of issues. We have deep less soils that are erusive when they get wet. We have a county road basically around every surrounding every square mile. We've got high drainage density, which means there's a lot of stream per mile. And then we've channelized our streams back in the early nineteen hundreds. So like the Floyd, for example, is unnaturally straight. And so that's why there are those great control structures along the Floyd that the Corps put in back in the sixties, I believe, or seventies. So Hungry Canyons exists to provide cost share for great control, mainly to the counties, but sometimes to, like Sioux City's received some money in the past and some other cities. But for the most part, it is the counties because they're the ones that have this high road network and there's encountering all these stream crossings on a regular basis. So there are, Woodbury County's received about one point eight million dollars from Hungry Canyons over the years, and we've done about fifty-seven projects here in the county. We get federal funds, or we used to get federal funds from ninety-two to two thousand ten, but we started, we get state money from ninety-six through the present. And we get five hundred thousand dollars a year. Basically, all of that money goes towards construction. The five thousand dollars that the counties all put in, that goes to my salary and to hire lobbyists to make sure that we still get five hundred thousand dollars every year. And so that handout that Mr. Nelson's looking at, that shows some photos on third, the third page, shows some photos of different types of projects. That top route is actually a weir project that was in Woodbury County here, that we completed probably three or four years ago. It was an old EWP weir that had blown out in a massive flood event that you guys had in twenty-ten, I believe. And so we participated with the county and made it look nice again, like it should. You have quite a few flumes in the county, and actually, this next row of photos, I think is from Woodbury as well. So the one on the right or the left isn't, is the old flume that was built probably in the sixties, had wood pilings on the sides, those rotted out, or it was replaced with a reinforced concrete box flume. And then culverts. And actually, the bottom row of photos is also from Woodbury County. This is totally unintentional, just good examples. This is out on Danbury Blacktop, I believe. And so Hungry Canyons provides cost share, eighty percent cost share, to do any great control related work, whether it's in-stream in the form of a weir, or underneath a bridge like, like a flume, or with culverts, and either at the drop inlet on the top side, a flume or a ceiling base on the bottom side, or a broken back in the middle underneath the road. We'll provide eighty percent cost share for new or replacement great control. And so that is our program in a nutshell.
Any questions?
Yes. Thanks for being here. This is something that I think is important as we support these different endeavors. From time to time, we'll have taxpayers ask, what is this for? And so to have this kind of presentation is very much appreciated. What, can you tell us, is the relationship between your organization and NRCS and soil conservation?
Sure.
And so on? How do you?
Sure.
Work through those relationships?
Okay, so we're a nonprofit. I'm the only employee for Hungry Canyons, but I do work with NRCS in several different ways. Three that I can think of right off the top of my head. First off, when EWP happens, when you have an emergency wash, emergency declaration in the county, if there are structures out there that have great control, we will supplement the great, the cost share that you're getting from the NRCS, and we'll give you, like in the last one, in twenty nineteen, you had six projects and we gave you fifteen percent. They gave you seventy-five. Or sorry, we gave you ten. They gave you seventy-five. So the county had fifteen. The second way that we work together is the, there's, we have a small structure program, but basically the interest money that we earn off of our, the money that's just sitting there, the while, between when it's appropriated and when it actually gets built. And so that is for landowners, and the idea behind that is that the NRCS typically provides fifty percent cost share, but that is, still that's a big stretch for some people because you're talking a five hundred thousand, or fifty thousand dollar project often. So the idea is that we'll give them eighty-five hundred dollars to help them get over the hump and actually do the project. And then the third way that we, that we work with the NRCS is there are a lot of P five sixty-six projects and five thirty-four projects here in, in Woodbury County. And I am actually under contract with the NRCS to go around the state of Iowa, scan all that, enter that information into a program called Dam Watch, and then to do trainings with NRCS staff. And actually, I'll be doing a training probably hmm, three years from now, or five years from now with you guys about your projects that you have in the county. So you'll see me again then. But that's the three ways that we interact that I can think of. And then the county road department, they have in the past received five thirty-four funds to do projects, and sometimes we'll, we'll partner with that as well. So.
And John, thanks for coming. I appreciate it.
Sure.
I actually, the bridge nearest my house, I saw the Hungry Canyon Alliance sign every, every day when I drove across it back and forth. And actually, you guys did a cooperative project with the county engineer to do a bank stabilization. It actually looks very familiar. It's not this top right photo here, but it's very familiar. The type of work that was done was just like that.
Okay.
And I farmed on that one side where they worked on both sides, but I was the farmer on one side. So.
Sure.
It's, it's still great to this day, and it's no till and conservation farmers, we play a part in that too, and trying to keep the bank and soil in place. So we really appreciate the work that you guys do and NRCS, and I'm really glad that you came and gave us an update today.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Yep.
You guys have any other questions for me?
No. Thank you.
All right. Well, thanks, guys.
Item eight from planning and zoning, Mr. Priestley, it includes A, fraction. This is to receive the final staff report and the zoning commission's recommendation from their March twenty-seventh meeting to approve the final plat of the cur addition, a minor subdivision to Woodbury County.
Good evening, supervisors. This is a two-lot subdivision just east of Sergeant Bluff. They waived the extraterritorial review. It's in a bit of flood plain. It's being split off to put a house in eventually. If they put a house in, they'll have to follow the flood plain regulations, but zoning commission does send the recommendation for approval.
This is to receive here. I'll move that.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Beddinger. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. And item B is to accept and approve the cur addition.
I'll move that.
I'll second the motion by Raddick. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine from secondary roads, county engineer Mark Nera. For action is approval of resolution in opposition to changes to local option sales tax and service tax changes reflected in Senate file five fifty.
As you read in my request for an agenda item, I'm quite concerned about the changes they're proposing to the local option sales tax. We've met with our legislators a couple of times, including in a chamber meeting here, two weeks ago, I met with a couple of senators. And the bill is still alive in the Iowa legislature right now. What they're proposing to do is to eliminate the local option sales tax and substitute a one cent sales tax, and then push that statewide. That's going to kick off the constitutional requirement that they put three eighths of that cent toward the I-Will program, which is for watershed protection and, and other water quality issues. I don't care if they raise a sales tax a penny, you know, as a citizen, I'd support that even. But I don't appreciate them going after our one cent sales tax. Woodbury County was the first county to pass the local option sales tax, I believe. Over the years, the boards of supervisors that preceded you have lowered our property taxes to our residents by, or rural residents anyway, by over two-thirds because that local option sales tax has been used to replace property tax at the minimum levy level. Next year, we're anticipating that will generate two point five million of the roughly four million dollars that's needed to meet our, our minimum local effort for the county. The County Engineers Association is on record as being opposed to this change. I believe there's about fifty-four counties right now that have a local option sales tax. Others have had it and let it lapse or used it for special projects. There's been a lot of different ways this has been manipulated that allows the people and the boards of supervisors to determine how that money's going to be used. I believe we all saw what happened last time. We relied on the state legislature to replace money that they changed when they changed the commercial and industrial valuations and what the rollbacks on those were. After about five years, they got tired of funding it, and now here we are with lower resources. Depending on how this gets administered, it, it would be an immediate property tax increase for our people in, in the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. So, you know, it depends on whatever we end up being short under the new law will have to be made up with local property tax efforts.
How much do we use per year? Was it five hundred thousand in the budget, or was it?
Two and a half million.
Two and a half.
In my budget. Yeah. We have about four million dollars in, in our general local effort, which is property taxes that we're levying. I guess we're up to one point seven million this year on that, or we're anticipating two point five million.
Your budget normally uses the rural levy, correct?
Yes, that's correct. That's.
Where a penny is equal to more like twenty thousand? Or what, what is it worth, Dennis?
About that.
Is it about twenty thousand?
The, the big problem here is with this new other bill that limits property tax rate increases and askings, their limit is to three point two five percent. How do we make up two and a half million dollars and meet the minimum levy when they're going to limit us on how much we can increase the tax rate? This is a severe problem, and from what I've heard on this local option, that they'll pretty much guarantee the money that comes like the voted tax, like on his eighty percent, the twenty percent, they aren't going to guarantee. That funds a lot of things we do in Woodbury County with the local option sales tax, as we've done this year. So changing this and trusting the stage is very difficult because they're going off the backfills.
The change also comes in January of twenty twenty-four, right in the middle of the fiscal year. If there ends up being a shortfall, there's almost no way for us to backfill that to prevent a loss of road use tax funds the following fiscal year. Anything we fall short, dollar for dollar, we get taken away in the next fiscal year in road use tax funds, so.
Mr. Taylor. It's a dollar twenty-five per thousand in the rural levy increase.
At least, yeah.
So I, I think this is yet another example where there's no skin in the game, so it's easy to make legislation in Des Moines when there's no cost to them, but it's to the, the counties. And then do it under the guise of, well, it's going to be revenue neutral to you as a taxpayer because, you know, when you have the, the one cent, the local option sales tax go away, it's offset here when we increase. And so it all has the veneer of being revenue neutral, but it's greater state growth and a loss and degradation at the local level. I think it's really important on Friday, when we meet with our legislators, that we demonstrate the ways that we have used local option sales tax, which not only Woodbury County residents pay, anybody can pay that, and that we have, for lack of a better term, either subsidized or replaced what would have otherwise fallen to property taxpayers. And so we're going to look to you. Are you able to be there also, Mark? Do you know?
I'll have to look at my calendar.
Okay. If you can, I think it'd be very, very helpful to explain, because we, we have you with the, the rural levy and the roads, but we also, Dennis, you can help us to remember and jog our memories where we have dedicated that, not just to new growth and spending, but to things that would otherwise or historically have been property taxpayer. So.
Yeah, the prime, prime one would be the event center down there where you give a hundred and fifty thousand a year for ten years. Without that, million and a half city, the event center may not exist. But there's other items throughout, the county fair, things like that, soil conservation. It's just a multitude of things that need to be pointed out that don't, please don't jeopardize that on us. Let the board make their own decisions.
Right.
Give us the money.
I, I think to the extent that we can kind of bifurcate what was necessity versus extra, what are mandates in conservation and, you know, soil conservation as well? Those things that we would have had to otherwise have funded through property taxes, but we're using lost funds for. So I, I just want to make sure that we hit those things so they don't say, well, then you don't need to do an event center in the future. You don't, it, it's almost as if we have the spat to cut, when I think we want to demonstrate that there's muscle and bone here as well.
Correct.
So if you can be there, that'd be helpful. If not, we understand.
Three thirty Friday, did I see?
Yes.
Here? Okay. But I, I wholeheartedly recommend the motion.
I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Taylor. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. Mark, we have another copy of this, I believe, that we've already signed.
Oh, great.
Actually, just one question. So in terms of, as much as I'd like to imagine that the legislators are scouring our minutes each week, what are the, the means of communicating this to them?
I am sending this by email to everybody tomorrow. So all of our legislators who represent any portion of Woodbury County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing that.
All right. We're on item ten from Board of Supervisors, Supervisor Raddick. For action, this is approval to direct zoning to evaluate solar power in Woodbury County.
Basically, if you own an acreage or land out in the county, it's not ag use, you don't have the right to put solar panels on your property. And across the road could be a hog confinement with panels on the roof because it's ag exempt, and it doesn't seem to make sense. So talking with Dan, seems like this is the step to request that planning and zoning look at evaluating solar pa, power in Woodbury County and how to make it so that, I would say, people have the same rights that they do if they lived in Sioux City, where typically you don't move out in the county and find it more restrictive to live than in the city. So, but is that about summing up?
Yeah, I'm just, there's kind of two facets here with residential versus commercial. I spoke to Sioux City zoning yesterday, and of course, in the past, and they look at residential-based solar panels in terms of an accessory use or an accessory structure to a, to, to an existing property. So if you own a house, basically, and you're interested in looking at solar panels, maybe putting them on your roof, or putting them on another location on the property, they can basically administratively permit those through the city planning and zoning office. As for the county, the way our zoning ordinance was written as it pertains to residential, we don't really have language in there that directly focuses in on residential solar panel. And so there's a section in there, three point oh three dot three, where it allows the zoning administrator to do a comparative look at something very similar and decide if it's an allowed or a conditional based use. And it's been interpreted in the county as a conditional use. And so what happens is you bring the residential solar panel proposal to the zoning commission through the Board of Adjustment, just to put them on the house or put them, you know, out in the yard. And so we're a bit more restrictive than the city based on that, that zoning interpretation. And our zoning ordinance references, for example, electric generator private use. That's the terminology, private use means it's the residential based, and that's what the, the language was compared to, to make that determination originally, as that conditional use. And so the conditional uses are recognized across every zoning district. So an AP, an AE, anywhere a residential could go, they would have the opportunity for a conditional use permit, at least right now, for solar energy. So comparing that to Sioux City, we had a permit a couple of years ago, actually a retroactive permit, kind of on the other side of Fleet Farm. There's some county there, just on the edge of Sioux City, where there's kind of mixed messages in the community where these companies come to landowners, and a lot of times, they don't clearly communicate with the local offices or even have understanding. When we get calls from San Francisco or other companies that are coming down on Iowans to offer these services, there's kind of a misconnection where I think it might be Sioux City policy, where it's really Woodbury County policy, where we almost, we retroactively had to go get a conditional use permit completed on somebody that thought they had everything properly completed. So that's the residential kind of discrepancy that we have in there. The, the other aspect of, for example, commercial-based or business-based solar energy, the zoning ordinance looks at electrical energy generation not involving wind. So that brings the determination back to solar energy as being decided to be a fit for general industrial zoning district only. Those panels are prohibited in every other zoning district. However, Iowa code, as well as the Woodbury County zoning ordinance recognizes the agricultural exemption to have structures or other assets on the property that will help a farmer glean income based on farming purposes, whether it's cattle or crop-based farming. And so what we've found is farmers can use that agricultural exemption to install those panels, power their homes, power the farm. And so we're kind of at a gray area situation here where a farmer could assert their agricultural exemption rights. And then we run into an intensity issue on, is something stay within that lane of agricultural exemption, or can it go out further in terms of multi-acre panels versus just in, in a sense, powering the farm? So the, the situation where we're at is Iowa code changed on June first of two thousand twenty, where the zoning office does not have the ability to take building permits anymore from ag properties. Farmers do not have to file a building permit, so we aren't able to necessarily gauge the activity from the building permit perspective that the office has been able to do historically. We used to also have a affidavit that folks would file with the office, which would basically swear to it that they're a farmer, that they glean income from the land, file Schedule F with the Iowa Department of Revenue, IRS, and basically the elements that prove yourself to be a farmer. So virtually, if a farmer decides, yes, I need to put a shed on my property, the Iowa code is very friendly asserting over the county to be able to put some of those structures on their respective land. So the same thing applies to panels, where panels, this could end up being out there, and they could be possibly out there for farming use. So this is something that's important to look at and see the respective balance. As a result of the general plan back in two thousand and five, it looks that the county put the initiative to put those in the general industrial district. However, it does reference the county's openness to renewable energy as it's referenced with wind or solar energy, as well as zoning ordinance does make a brief reference to that. So those are kind of some of the challenges that kind of Chief Supervisor Raddick had referenced in terms of the ag exempt and them being able to, there's a pathway to get them out there, basically.
Well, basically, I had an attorney call me today too as well, just to say, hey, you know, and he was on the city's planning and zoning board, so I knew him. And he just says, you know, residents out there in the rural area pay a lot more for their energy rates, so you might see a ten-year payback on solar in Sioux City. You might see a six-year payback on solar out in the county. So the demand is actually higher, and here we are without the avenue, or, you know, I mean, if you have to go hire an attorney to figure out how to put solar panels on your house, I think our county's a little backwards. So that's just why it's on the agenda.
So I guess my question for Supervisor Raddick, so this rural resident that says they can't put panels up, did they go through the conditional use permitting process then? Or?
I don't think they've moved, I, I didn't know who it was. Like I said, I've had more attorneys reach out to me, but it's like, of the standpoint, if you got to hire an attorney and take these steps to even put panels on your house?
Right.
Where's the incentive to do it? Like, we're, we're really trying to say, you, you don't have rights, but your neighbor across the street that has them on its hog confinement, he does. That's, that's what I see.
My question would be, why do we even have a conditional use permit in the first place?
Right.
I mean, typically, a conditional use permit says, look, this is going to be a nuisance, or you have to provide dust control, or there's some sort of noise. I mean, we're talking about solar panels, and so unless somebody says, you know, I'm blinded by the light, or, or some weird concoction of a thing, I don't like any more rules and regulations than are necessary. So can you explain what the impetus of having a conditional use permit in the first place? What would it mitigate that a neighboring resident would say, you know, we needed to go through this because without these four, five, six conditions, our, our quality of life would have been so degraded? I mean, what, what's the philosophy behind that?
I think a lot of times when a conditional use is instituted on a particular type of action, especially when technology evolves, I think originally it comes up to, are they connecting their relationships with the various agencies? So it's sort of a way for us to enforce, are they talking to the? So, it's sort of a way for us to enforce, are they talking to the power companies? Are different designs, could they possibly glare? So, there's these different aspects to where the neighbors might have a compelling interest where somebody has one set up. I know that the technology has changed quite a bit where they don't glare as much, other than if they, some might interpret the aesthetics of them as some type of nuisance type of matter. I know that going on your question, I think it was more because it's a utility or utility-type base scenario to ensure that they're getting permits and other aspects from other agencies as well.
And I can appreciate the answer. I don't know, to me, that that raises the bar enough to say, I really want to make sure. I mean, if we were just, this is new technology, you know, fifteen years ago to say, we better get some of these things in place. So, I appreciate the, especially if the farmer across the street on his or her own home can do the exact same thing and say, well, you're in a different, you're in a different profession. You work in Sioux City, so no, you've got to go through this process, but you farm, so you don't. To me, I'm appreciative of the bringing it up and I would rather be less restricted than more.
And just to be clear, we're talking about residential panels that someone wants to power their house or their shop or whatever, but not a commercial.
That's what I'm directing here, but at the same time, I mean, if your job is planning and zoning, you probably want to be sure you're all encompassing too. So, like, most things in ag use are exempt anyway. We don't get to put any restrictions on it. But I think you're probably looking for a definition of language. So, like, I'll give an example of, like, I went out on a, to a customer's place out in rural Nebraska. On the way there, I went by like a huge cattle operation. And they had all these like lean-to type cattle sheds where they dropped off all this hay. Well, with a solar panel on each one of those, that's more than that farmer's ever going to use. So, does he have to get classified as industrial under our code? Even though the primary use of everything there is ag? Because are you going to start taxing the guy more because he's generating power? I don't know. I think we get into some slippery area there where we could get sued because a farmer could assert, no, this is ag. The primary use of this land is ag. It just so happens to have enough solar that I sell some back to the grid. So, I don't know where you define that or where you put those lines. And I'm not here to make that sausage. That's something they can look at. But yeah, the primary focus is to start with.
My understanding of like the ag exemption is that you can build as many panels or even your own wind turbines to power your operation. Obviously, you're going to exceed that because there's no way that you can have renewable energy source and you're hitting exactly that hundred percent usage every month. But the intent was to not, like, let's say if you need ten panels to power your farm, you're not putting twenty of them up under the ag exemption. And I think that was their intent, that if you are going to go into, you know, putting up your own panels to selling electricity back on the grid, then you're, that's not, that doesn't fall under that ag exempt category. If that's, if that's how I understand it correctly, is that how you understand it?
Well, you kind of always look at things from an intensity issue to the point of somebody asserts the ag exempt, it's powering the farm. I think they can make a reasonable choice on that. But the question is if they go further and further and two acres, three acres, five acres, and all of a sudden, this is now farming for sun and selling back to the grid and everything of that nature, it's kind of an intensity issue. Assert the ag exempt, they can do that without any, basically without any paperwork or interacting with the county. And then, we're at a point now, there's a solar field out there that people are not happy with. And so, that's a risk too.
See, I agree. I think we're on the residential side that if you're using a solar panel to power your house, that's still different than using a solar panel to power your hog barn. So, I, to me, that there, it should be relatively easy for both parties to do that. I'm just on the concern of the commercial side that we, I think we have pretty good ordinances in place on the commercial side that I'd rather not mess with. But on the residential side, I, if you want to go off the grid and have your own, go for it, you know, I.
Well, and that's where, I mean, I'm not trying to, like you said, I'm not trying to make the sausage here. That's for planning and zoning board to do. And what they look at and encompass in it, you know, we get the final vote over anyway, so.
Sure.
So, do you have a motion in mind or a thought of how to approach this with zoning? And Joshua, do you have any recommendations for us?
Well, I think this is what Keith is suggesting, but changes to the ordinance would typically be, we would ask the zoning commission for a recommendation, do some research. They could even hold their own hearings, but at least go through that process. Dan would be closely involved with that. And then, they come back to the supervisors with the recommendation. And then, at that point, you can run with that recommendation, you can make changes. But at least you've had some of that background work done and it helps you make a more informed decision.
Alright. Yeah, basically, that's the motion on the agenda is to make Dan and the board do more work.
Yeah, and I would, I'm in favor of the motion, I think for the residential people. I think we could make their lives a lot easier and streamline this, you know. But I know with people in the rural area, I think that they, they like the commercial ordinance that we have. So, I'd ask to not, that we don't touch that. But on the residential side, I would love to see it less restrictive, for sure.
And if I may comment on the, the current structure for the commercial-based is, it's prohibited everywhere but general industrial for the commercial base. So, the area south of the airport that we have planned out for the general industrial district, that's where the businesses that would get a multi-acre operation. An example of that would be a couple of years ago, Mid-American did approach a zoning commission board of adjustment down there on Port Neal Road on the corner near their campus. They went through zoning commission and were conditioned directly on that parcel, that general industrial parcel. So, the question is, could a commercial operation go out on ag land with the farmer, with lease agreements, that type of thing, and actually do that there? That would be kind of the biggest change in nature if the county were to pursue that. I know folks have different opinions on farmland going out of production and panels being put up in the place. And so, definitely diverse views out there when it comes to the priority. And I know as a result of the original, or excuse me, the two thousand and five plan, it seemed the county's priority was to keep them in a different portion of the county versus having them go out there. And I'll give you a real quick example. If you wanted to put panels out, let's just say, north of Hornick somewhere and it's all AP land, you would, the only route, if you're not a farmer, would be to ask for a rezone to general industrial. And typically, spot zoning is pretty much not a thing to do. It's not recommended. Zoning commission will probably ten out of ten times not send a recommendation over to rezone that. But ultimately, to get panels out there in a business sense would be to switch the district over to general industrial. And then, on top of that, get a conditional use permit on board. So, there's multifaceted scenarios.
So, it seems to me sometimes we have a very specific, limited problem. But the solution itself, if not targeted, becomes an even bigger problem. So, I appreciate what you've identified. And I would move to direct zoning to evaluate solar power for residential purposes only in Woodbury County. I don't, what I don't want to do is have a whole look, like, let's open up commercial, let's open up what the ag exempt, and then, all of a sudden, we're in a convoluted thing. I think you're, what you brought up, looking at allowing citizens their rights, I think circumscribes it to just that alone, I think would be good. Because my worry is.
The whole point, though, is if you're opening it up, you should look at everything in the ordinance too, especially because laws have changed. And you just want to be, I don't, I mean, like, if somebody were to come in and put some panels on, they say on hog barns, and they had more panels than they need, and we force them to change their whole property, whole forty acres or something, all into industrial, and they say, no, this is still ag, my primary use is ag. Are we opening a can of worms, you know, to a lawsuit that we don't want to have? That maybe it's better off having people that are on planning and zoning, this is their job as part of the people that volunteer for that, they should look at it all.
I guess I would have a question for Josh, because I think that the state would say that unless that farmer can prove that their forty acres of panels that they put in is powering their farm, that they are not in the farming business, that they're in the energy business. And I think that they're going to, you know, mandate or say that they cannot do that, you know. So, I think that that's what that ag exempt for was to not push those boundaries and to use those electric generation types or practices to power exactly what they need and not just become an energy generator or farming the sun, as you put it. So, I think that the state would back us up in saying, no, you can't prove that you're, you know, you're making ten times the electricity that you need that your farm uses. We're not going to permit this to fall under this ag exemption. But I guess Joshua, you can dig into that.
When it comes to the ag exemption, the test is whether the use or structure is primarily adapted to agriculture. So, if the panels were powering the farm and there was, you know, a little bit of surplus energy here and there that was being sold back to the grid, the farmer could comfortably make the assertion that it's primarily adapted for the farming use. If you, they were generating well in excess of the farm's use and, you know, the more you generate and the greater that distance is between the farm use and what they're selling, I think that they would be moving away from the ag exemption. I mean, in some respect, if that argument carried weight, that you look at the, well, for wind turbines, you know, you can farm around the wind turbines and you're still getting a crop off of that field, but you're selling the majority of that energy. So, I think it would be a similar analysis here if you had a large solar installment and selling most of that back, then it probably would not be an ag exemption project.
Well, that's also a challenge because when they build like a tower, that little, you know, I don't know how much square footage of land they use, but that little square footage becomes industrial, but the farm stays ag. Right?
I don't think it's actually rezoned.
No, not in terms of the district.
So, the whole thing actually just stays ag?
Yeah.
So, for wind, it would stay ag, but for solar, then you'd say after a certain point, it changes to industrial. And to me, that, I don't know, that's where I see like, we're going to have a problem in the future at some point. So, why not have them at least look at it while they're looking at everything? It's, once you open it up, they can look at anything anyway. But we just are directing them to look at the residential side or whatever. But honestly, they, whatever they look up in the zoning ordinance, I mean, we, we have final vote of whatever they say anyway.
Yeah, the districts are tied to the properties that are within the districts. They have their set of uses that are either appropriate or not, accessory, conditional as a whole. And like with the wind situation, that was separate from zoning. It was brought out as a standalone ordinance that doesn't really consider zoning. It has its own specific parameters, its own specific setbacks, et cetera. But the way the zoning ordinance is written, these panels or electrical energy is fully governed under the zoning ordinance at this point in time. So, it has to be matching with the appropriate zoning district. So, part of the question is what's appropriate by district, basically.
And this is since two thousand and five?
Yeah, two thousand and five was the development plan, but the actual zoning ordinance was implemented in two thousand and eight and passed. But the feelings that come out of the general plan and everything are usually incorporated into the ordinance as the general plan is a lot of the feelings of the people, the population in terms of what the expectations are for what county, what kind of county we want to be over a period of time. And so, that's reflected in the zoning ordinance that they decided that general industrial would be the place for that at that point in time. But over twenty years, technology does change. We look at renewable and all these different things that they advance. And sometimes, there are points where you have to go back and monitor and look and see if things have changed for the better or not, or basically an evaluation.
And your proposal, is it basically to look at the general plan?
I mean, I just, the main point is just direct them to evaluate solar panel or power in Woodbury County. And, you know, I was alerted by the residential side of it, but just thinking about it, like, when this was written in oh eight, solar farms looked way different. They were just like little corners on the side of the road with panels lined up, took all that land and made it useless. Now, there's like all different kinds of panels. Most of them are going on structures. And most of them, if they cover every structure on the farm, is going to produce way more than their farm needs. So, I feel like we're going to get ourselves, if we try to force them into an industrial district and the primary use of the land is ag, I think we're going to jeopardize some, you know, lawsuits in the process. Because there's also like, I mean, they make like panels on towers that can rotate to the sun and then they drop rainfall in a certain area. You know, if you were to have like crops that don't need year-round sun, I don't think we have any tomato farms in our county, but that was something that was brought up. Like, you know, tomato farms have these swivel panels on them. And I've seen pictures of them, but it's not something we have here. But it's something that could end up here. I don't know, you know. And we also have ground in Woodbury County that has terraces. That ground is not plowed and could be something that has a structure put on it. And how do you say that the usage of the land has changed? So, I don't know. It's something that is not something, I'm going to solve myself. And I don't think us as a board will solve it. I think it's best to start a process with our planning and zoning and then look at all of it.
Was there some public input from Doyle?
I agree with Keith. I think you do need to look at all of it. I think the big issue is, I don't think anybody in the country really cares if you put them on every building you have. Aesthetically, we don't care what things look like on our neighbor's property out there. But the other thing I think that we need to consider is, Mid-American is in dire need of more power in our county. We kind of slowed down their idea of wind turbines. I think we should be considering, how do we produce more solar for them in a way that doesn't affect our life, the way we live? So, to me, I think we should be looking at, right now, in the rural, it's not worth doing. They don't pay enough. I mean, it's a bad deal. But if Mid-American were to come in and actually want to purchase it, I have talked to them about that. My idea was, we've got commercial feedlots out here that where the feed bunks aren't covered. And they make panels that go up above and you cover those feed bunks. Well, now they're serving two functions. They're not in my way. They're actually helping the cattle. And we can put miles and miles and miles of these things up and they aren't going to hurt anybody. So, my thought is, is look at the whole thing so that we can create, maybe create an opportunity so that rather than wind turbines, we, I think we can make solar that was more viable.
Well, I think, you know, in general, if you're a farmer and you want to put a bunch of panels up right now, you could claim the ag exemption, put them all up. And then what? What if somebody says, well, this guy's, you know, he's making money off of it too? Well, then, I mean, I don't know, because right now, we just allow it essentially. They can do whatever.
Well, I think, back to the point on the residential, I don't think anybody really cares how many you put on the buildings on the residential side, as long as we don't have them stacked all over four acres. Four, you know, four or five acres, nobody wants that. So, we don't want, I don't think it's an, because the way the technology is going, these panels should be getting smaller and smaller and smaller and producing more and more electricity. So, I don't think we should look at it from an income side, but rather, are we taking more space to put these panels up? So I don't think we should look at it from an income side, but rather are we taking more space to put these panels up? And if they make more money, all the better, you know, that's my idea. I don't care how much my neighbor makes off of them as long as they aren't producing a nuisance within the county.
So I guess my comment, Keith, would be that, so we looked into uh putting panels on our farm last year. We actually priced some and went through a study of how much, you know, electricity we were using, that kinda stuff and I think Mid-American is better at at buying electricity that is overproduced. But Mid-American also kinda services only the towns and not the rural areas, like we deal with R E C. And essentially, anything we overproduce, they got from us for free.
Mm-hmm.
So there was definitely not an incentive as a farmer to overproduce. And so if anything, you would want to underproduce. But then underproducing isn't enough bang for your buck to even do it. So then we ended up just scrapping the whole deal. And so I think a lot of people, I think that if you can generate enough for your house, I think that for some people, there might be enough bang for their buck that they wanna do that. But as far as, you know, overproducing to sell the grid privately, there's just not, there's not money there. So I I think that where people are gonna wanna come in and work on the commercial side um to sell it commercially, they're gonna wanna control it to where you know, like a company like Mid-American whoever owns, you know, all the all the panels, has an easement on land or whatever, does it. And so that's where I'm a little hesitant because the conversation I've had with farmers in the area, they like the the commercial aspect of what we have. Um I think that the residential side definitely needs changed, but I guess I wouldn't be opposed to looking at it, you know, but I'm just saying be prepared because I think that they kind of like what we have now and maybe things have changed in the last year or two on some of those conversations. But uh that's just my my two cents. But unfortunately, there's there's not really a requirement for these companies to pay the going rate for excess electricity. So then if you're not dealing with a good company, you know, like Mid-American, I think does a pretty decent job, but some of these other guys, you know, it's it's just kinda like you're working for free, unfortunately. So there's just not a good bang there for your buck.
Well, like Joshua said, we can do what we want with their recommendation and if it is not, you know, a good idea to impact other areas, we certainly don't have to and maybe they don't want to
Sure.
for the same reason. So I guess I don't have any hard burn about opening it up as originally proposed, so um wanna make that motion, Mr. Raddig?
Yeah, I'll move it.
Motion by Raddig, second by Bittenger. Any other discussion? Thank you for shining a light on this, Mr. Raddig.
No problem.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, say nay. Pass is five zero. Item eleven is reports on committee meetings. Uh the legislative roundtable for Friday at three thirty uh down here, just a reminder on that. Uh been in communication with Building Services and I T. They're going to set up uh some tables just right down here. And the uh distance that these mics can stretch may not reach the end of the table, but it'll be good enough. Michelle, if you or someone from your office could be here to make sure the meeting's live streamed and recorded, I assume that simple use of that camera is all we would need um for the roundtable down here. Uh this point, I've only heard a hard no from one legislator. Jeff Taylor has a scheduling conflict. I've heard three yeses. Uh Mr. DeWitt's intending to come, but he said he has security scheduled and he's gonna try and get out of it upstairs. So maybe we know someone in the office that can allow him to, otherwise he can just shout down the stairs and we can shout back or find some other way to communicate. Um yeah, string, yep. Um so that'll be good. I I think all of us can still be there, is that correct?
Yep.
Um I know two supervisors from Plymouth will be there and I believe at least one from Anona. Um so we should have a a group of what we need. And again, I do think it'd be helpful for us to share the recording with anyone that wasn't there. And we'll have copies of this resolution if there's any others uh we can think of to have on hand. Dennis, did you have something?
Yeah, uh talked to John today and he's gonna try to have it live on YouTube. Uh the reason why there's people probably like to listen, but also ISAC would like to listen to the conversation too.
Oh, good.
Lucas from ISAC requested I talk about, he said, like to listen to it.
Good, good. Um any any thoughts on the roundtable? We had a um agenda that went out on our topics. I hadn't heard from legislators on things they want to discuss in particular, but I know they're going through funnels and there's a lot on their plate right now, so.
For each of those items, are we kinda leading off on each one?
Right. I I I envision the county supervisors as a whole just leading off on introducing that that item and then kind of waiting for some feedback from the legislators, moving on to the next item. And just making sure we get the items addressed and whoever has the most helpful information from the county side can can speak up and we can just have a dialogue. And if there's anything they think we're missing that's not addressed, then they'll have time to ask us questions. Hopefully they do. Cause we'll have some staff around to help us answer uh anything that we need some further detail on and I don't know if, I don't think it's been done um in this way for for a long time, so um certainly I'm not aware of it before, so appreciate everyone getting together and making the dates work. Any other thoughts on that? All right. Um personal announcement, I will be uh here next week for the board meeting. The following two meetings and uh the last two meetings of April, April eighteenth and April twenty fifth, I will intend to call in. Um I will be out of town. I'll be on a mission trip in Albania from April thirteenth through the twenty fifth, during which time, of course, Vice Chair Taylor will be uh administering the meetings and anything else that comes up, so. Any other committee meetings?
Um, oh, I'll go ahead. Um I talked with Mark Dar briefly after a meeting last week about uh secondary roads and the uh carbon pipelines that plan to traverse through or under the roads. I'd been getting calls from uh county residents um about something that happened up in Lyon County where Lyon County um denied a permit for, I believe it was Navigator, to go through the secondary roads and they were asking me to to check into that. I had a uh a mutual friend that got me in touch with a supervisor from Lyon County. I talked to him last week. Um essentially what they did was they had uh initially granted the permit for the pipeline company to go through their secondary roads. And then they um decided to rescind that and they wanted to wait until all the other permits were in place for that company and they had met safety requirements and that sort of thing. And then they're gonna take it up again, you know, potentially later this year or next year, whenever some of that stuff will get done. So I think that talking with Mark, that's something that's probably gonna come up here, you know, they're gonna want access.
I did some research and shared that with Joshua, so he's taking a look at the
Okay.
code sections right now.
Sure. Um I just, I think that uh that would be a good way for us to handle if that comes up, that uh we try to push that back and and make sure that all their ducks in a row, you know, I think they're gonna go through quite a few roads in the county, um which will obviously have an effect on those roads. So I I would like to just to have a have a cautious approach to to that access and and um so anyway, it was just a great conversation with that guy. That's all I have on our committee boards, so.
Committees, committees, committees. Item twelve, any citizen concerns? We only have one with us today.
You gotta count John back there. Oh, is it?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Uh they're being paid to be here. Depends how you slice it, right? If the meeting goes long enough, I don't know if you are. Item thirteen, any board concerns?
Maybe not a concern, but I had a good meeting with uh Tyler Erickson and the city assessor. We had a good long meeting. Uh I've been getting a lot of phone calls from you guys and who knows about uh.
I've heard there's been some assessment going on.
A smidge of concern. Uh anyhow, uh you know, Thursday, uh is it at six? At the uh City Public Museum, there's the big meeting. He's gonna be explaining the process, so I'm I'm just encouraging friends, neighbors that are concerned that have come to me uh to go there and so just wanna make sure everybody knows about that and but um it's not gonna be as bad, I think, as some of our constituents are concerned. Tyler, we went through a lot of different um uh pulling out random properties and going through what's assessed value versus taxable value and so I think it's not gonna, it's gonna be uh manageable more. I think there are some concerns with the high selling market. Uh you know, there's some concerns there. How do you deal with that? How do you have control assessed value? But anyhow, I think it's um I think it's a good meeting for people to go to. If any of us can make it, I'll be there.
And that's Thursday at six?
Yeah.
The City Public Museum?
I think it's good for us to show up and just to support and just help and answer any questions or just calm down any angry citizens to help with that, so.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. I hope anyone can make it that can. Um I won't be able to be there. I have a prior commitment, but I would if I could. I to piggyback off of that, I did speak to our county assessor just on the whole issue and the whole process and um you know, they're, you know, they deal with obviously ag land as well and with that has a even slightly higher average increase. They believe it's twenty nine percent. That's based over five year productivity period average. Um but also just a, you know, there's all, there's a lot of people that say, you know, let's do something yeah about this and and there is an opportunity for anyone interested. You can sign up to be on the board review. Five citizens that will hear these appeals. Um they are from rural communities in Woodbury County. They are for six year terms, uh appointed by the conference board. As long as U S senators are there, but they tend to resign a little bit faster than U S senators. Um and it pays a hundred fifty dollars a day plus mileage. And I asked if they've ever had to choose between two applicants for one seat and no, they practically have to beg people to uh sit on the board review. So just a public service announcement. You know, that's one way that you can actually do something.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Any other board concerns?
You wanna talk about uh setbacks?
The wind, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so Supervisor Nelson and I, um we've been in touch with some of the city mayors, uh towns mayors, excuse me, and uh they are them and their city councils are concerned. They want to see the um the setback uh for wind turbines up against the city limits increased. Uh and so Supervisor Nelson and I are working with them. Um they wanna see that increase. Um and so um we'll be uh working with them uh to get them before us just to bring their concerns and then potentially uh bring that to zoning com- commission and Dan uh to help look at that, see can we um can we increase that setback regarding how close can a turbine get to a s- a city limit, so.
Out of curiosity, could the city set their own limits? Instead of making it be our thing to have to do?
On the on the wind ordinance?
Yeah.
Uh that's that's our uh county ordinance specifically, so it's us. They they wouldn't have any involvement, but they can definitely have comments on how ours is set up, sure.
So since that's a standalone ordinance, we can't add that to their task to do, right? The what we did on item ten?
Oh, the yeah.
It's a standalone.
It's a standalone ordinance, so it would be uh solely going through the supervisor's procedure. It would not require the zoning commission review. It'd just be the three public hearings.
Yeah, so what we're, what we were looking at, Keith, talking with Dan, is uh
No, I know what you're looking at. I just, I was seeing it.
Well, I was just gonna say for for the public, we're looking at two miles, which is what the extraterritorial review is for the cities currently. Um I actually, some of the towns had exercised that right within this year or last year, and so they were very familiar with that as well. Um currently, I think the ordinance is six hundred feet or a hundred and ten percent of tower height. Um we just found out Plymouth County is two miles from their city limits, which is what we're trying to match. Um currently, there are a few rural towns that are working on some housing developments and they're very concerned about their investments and will they be able to complete those projects if if they don't have the space to grow. Um and I think when you talk about the length of time of some of these easements of four, you know, forty to eighty years, I think it's important that we can can continue to grow. I mean, a hundred new homes across this county would do amazing things, you know, so um so yeah, we've been talking with quite a few towns about that and then uh the other one was uh uh conservation areas are also a six hundred feet or a hundred and ten percent setback. Um and the conservation areas are defined as like county or state or federal parks within the county. So it wouldn't be like CRP or conservation land like that. It'd be something that the county parks runs. As liaison to the conservation board, I brought this up to them. They stewed over it and they their recommendation was they would like to see the setback increase to a half mile or four and a half times tower height. Um I learned a new term called the scarecrow effect, which I guess is something they use in conservation, talking about uh how the turbines kind of keep wildlife, scare wildlife away like a scarecrow would do in your garden. And so they said, well, what's the point of having some of these natural areas and public hunting areas if if we're gonna have these machines that are detrimental to wildlife in the close vicinity? So we're gonna work on that. Um where some of the towns had passed, some of their councils had already passed letters of support, some are working on them. So once we kind of pool that, we'd like to get uh Dan involved and Josh, you know, as far as changing those two parts of the ordinance and and moving forward on that. So but that's yeah, something we've been working on, so.
And then, of course, I'd say that's something we should bring back, put on the agenda to vote to give them direction.
Yes, right, yeah, for sure. Yep, yep.
That uh we are not acting on something not on the agenda for the recorder over there.
Yep, correct.
Any other board concerns?
Can I just uh uh we've been getting some praise for passing that or for signing that letter to the, sending that letter to I U B. So um a lot of great comments the past week on that and I I think that it's a very contentious issue for a lot of these landowners and they don't feel like they have many options, so they were just, a lot of them very supportive that we're thinking of, so. We can all pat ourselves on the on the back, so thanks.
Any other board concerns? That doesn't count.